Five to order. The time is now 7:02. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag, in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one C is the roll call of council members. I will ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Rocksmith? Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember Tassero?
Here.
Councilmember Vanderstue?
Here.
Thanks, Becky. Council, item two is the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. We had discussed prior to the meeting the removal of item H to refine that contract a little bit. Would someone like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with, to include the removal of item H?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Navore and second by Gary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes and we will strike item H. Item three is community comments. If there's anyone present in council chambers tonight who would like to address city council, please come on up to the podium. Please state your name and your city of residence and let your comments do about three minutes. Hello, Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And all members of council. My name is Kevin Moss. I live south of downtown in Mount Vernon city limits. I'm here tonight to go through a little thought exercise with you. So, the total combined income of all the households in Mount Vernon, it's right about a billion dollars. Do the math, we got just short of 14,000 households, 75 grand average household income, right about a billion dollars. On average, households spend about 15% of their income on automobile transportation. So of that 150 million spent annually on automobiles, most of it leaves our community. Our repair shops and auto dealers and gas stations retain some of the money, but we assemble no cars, we drill for no oil, and we manufacture no car parts within city limits. So in rough terms, every year, the residents of Mount Vernon must earn an amount greater than the city budget just to send that money out of town for car-related spending. Every year, over $100 million earned and gone. The next year, earned and gone. So what if I could tell, what if I told you that there were levers that you could pull to divert some of that money back into the city? Well, that's why I'm here tonight. We, you, we, can build those levers by updating our city's housing policy and doing that through the comprehensive plan update. Smarter zoning that allows more people to live closer to where they work. Could that divert 1% of that lost money back into the city? Maybe in a decade? Could that be 5%? Some of that money could be spent on housing. That adds long-term value to the city. You can tax that. You can get property taxes out of it. That money isn't lost, it stays here. But so far, these policy changes are just a concept. We have no tangible policy proposals to discuss. I was encouraged to hear that we have a community meeting in a few weeks and to hear that at that meeting there will be some discussion of middle housing, but we need to look at what we are actually going to do. I say this because I've been watching our neighboring cities lead on this issue. I am very jealous of our neighboring cities. I am a Mount Vernon resident. I have lived here most of my life. I will live here most of the rest of my life. But I look at cities like Anacortes and I am jealous. The Anacortes Planning Commission has already held a dozen meetings where they have discussed specific written housing policy, tweaking their code, trying to make it better. Burlington has already had three planning commission meetings where they've specifically discussed policies, not just generally, but specific policies. What do we do here? Anacortes, they rewrote their development code about five years ago. They allow things like mixed-use residential and commercial zones, something that, I'm sure you're aware, we still prohibit in most of the city. Anacortes is working to improve their cottage code, something that we're supposed to add, but we don't have any specific policy proposals to do so yet. I urge you to ask for draft policies that we can discuss, that you can discuss in these meetings, that the planning commission can discuss at their meetings, that the community can discuss in community meetings. Things you can put on maps, things you can outline, colors you can change to say, what would things look like if we wanted to divert some of our money that we spend on transportation, some of the money that people spend driving out of town to work? If we wanted to divert that money back into our town? I'm gonna give you one just quick example. Think about the northwest corner of the city, going from the railroad tracks, I don't know if I'm facing the right direction, northwest to the river, to that area behind the Walmart. That area, it's about half a square mile of usable property, if you leave out the right-ofways. It's four times the size of the whole downtown area. So about 300 acres of buildable land. Probably 100 of those acres is just parking lot. Substantially, all of the zoning is commercial and nobody lives there. We've got lots of businesses. There's quite a few jobs. I would even say lots of jobs, but nobody lives there. We can talk about specific policy proposals like, should we allow housing there? What would it look like? How big could the buildings be? Should we keep them small? Can they be tall? Should they be up against the current large roads or maybe back away from them? These are the policy proposals that we need to start discussing as soon as possible because every year, $100 million, what is that? Hundreds of thousands of dollars a day leaving our community. Let's divert that money, even just a little bit of it, back into our community, spend it on housing, spend it on our businesses, spend it in our sidewalk cafes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else wishing to address council tonight? Hello, Mr. Morales?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. I, well first I'll start off by saying my name and why I'm here. Juan Morales, resident of Mount Vernon, Skagit County. Here for public comments. I am here tonight because I have to, not necessarily because I want to. With that, you all know that I have a deep love and respect and appreciation for the city and for each and every single one of you. At the last council meeting, January 22nd, during council member comments, as shown on the city's YouTube video, between minute 22:30 and minute 26, an elected official, and I won't mention any names because I'm certainly not like that, suggested to the city and to the mayor that the city should reach out to the White House and potentially send feral or stray cats to Springfield, Ohio, so that they could be eaten by the Haitian community. This was explicitly clear. It was explicitly heard at the council meeting. It was disturbing. It was degrading. And this is the exact messaging of a culture war language that was used during this last federal election. A message of division is the stance of the current administration that we have. And I cannot stand in idle while that similar messaging could be or would be repeated in the city, in this chamber, in my hometown. At a time where minority communities are under attack by the current administration, and hearing what I heard is wrong. Equally as wrong was some of the laugh that I heard. Equally as wrong was the silence and not rejecting that claim. One person said it disagreed. And as you all know, leadership and character shows at critical moments. So whether one ran for a contested or uncontested race, regardless, I know that each of you know and appreciate that when voters voted for all of you, they voted for all of you to lead and do the right thing. Now, I'm a very understanding person. So in the benefit of the doubt, I understand that, you know, the laughs, the silence was from an awkward situation. It certainly would be. If I was in your shoes, I would certainly feel that same awkwardness. That's understandable. And, you know, hearing that, I understand it would have gotten some of you, all of you, off guard if, if, if and only if, if it was the first time hearing it. So just to be clear, I'm not here to be pointing any fingers at anybody. I'm just pointing out an issue and offer a solution. When degrading words are spoken, it erodes trust. It erodes confidence. When there's silence against it, it too erodes trust. It too erodes confidence. I say this because many of the departments have worked incredibly hard to establish and ground themselves in the community. And even the best public relations can be jeopardized when trust and confidence erodes. And I don't want that to happen. I don't want that to happen. So, going forward, when we speak, let's speak with wisdom and not resort to degrading language. And when faced in a difficult, in a difficulty or controversy, let's not stay silent. Let's speak up against that and push back against that. So on that note, I wish you all the best of success in your jobs. As I personally know, it is a hard one. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Anyone else wishing to address council tonight? All right, we will move on. Item four is tonight's consent agenda. It includes meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, claims, and an agreement. Councils, there are a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mary and second by Idris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes, all right. Item five is committee reports. For committee reports tonight, council held its monthly Development Services Committee tonight, six o'clock, and council member Melissa Beaton is the chair of that committee and she will give us a report. Melissa?
Thank you, mayor. After we approved our minutes, we rolled right into a review of two draft contracts that are on our agenda this evening. Both are related to work required for our comprehensive plan. The first contract is with Transpo to update the city's active transportation plan, which is part of the transportation element of our comp plan. The second contract, excuse me, is with Lee and Associates to review and audit the city's buffer buy-down program, which is a managed ecosystem alternative that the city offers. I believe we're the only city in the state that does offer it, which is required as an element of the updating the city's critical areas ordinance of our comp plan. We did decide to pull that from our agenda after discussion. So you won't see that contract, actually. And both of these contracts are funded through the climate grant received from the State Department of Commerce. Next, we were briefed on a March 1st public community meeting that will be held at the Library Commons. The meeting represents an element of our public participation plan regarding our periodic update and will include information on missing middle housing. You might ask yourself, what is defined by missing housing? Missing middle housing? It means buildings that are compatible in scale, form, and character with single-family houses and contain two or more attached, stacked, or clustered homes, including duplexes, triplexes, four, five, and six-plexes, townhomes, stacked flats, and courtyard apartments, and also cottage housing, which they have shared outdoor space. It's all about density. This allows the cities to build up and not out. The meeting will also include a workshop, a workshop on individual neighborhood needs. Then we had a discussion on proposed updates to our draft downtown environmental impact statement slash planned action, OTAC contract. And under the direction of us, staff has directed OTAC to provide an updated draft that reduces the cost by half and demonstrates staff being responsible for the public engagement portion of that. We then received a monthly update on permits and projects and then, which included permit numbers and revenue collection. Future agenda items include the Eaglemont Master Plan update along with the Blackburn Road extension that'll include expectations, costs, designs, who pays, how far we want to take that. Also, presentations by our Dyke Districts here in the city and then also sidewalk cafes in downtown. And with that, we adjourned at 6:59.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. That's the second meeting for the comprehensive plan, the second public meeting again coming up March 1st. Looking forward to that. And of course, that comp plan update right on track with the timeline we shared with the public last year. Next up is the report on Public Safety Committee. And Mary Hudson covered, you covered for Navore last week.
I did cover for Navore.
You got a report for us?
I sure do. It's gonna be very interesting because I have been spoiled by my past committee assignments and had notes. And this was all my chicken scratch, so I really hope I can read it. We met last Wednesday here. We, of course, approved our minutes. And then Chief Christman, our police chief Christman, gave the first portion of the meeting, talked about North River Commercial Area Crime Ephesus. And for those of you who are unsure, the north, that area is North College Way, Safeway Coastal and Moore, Hobby Lobby, Tractor Supply, et cetera, in that area. So those businesses are a private property and we had to get buy-in from the business owners to let us actually try to do some work there. And with a lot of discussions and meetings, we were able to get the businesses to let us. They said they wanted these people, these folks trespassed. So that gave us a lot more latitude. So we have really been pushing an emphasis in that area, cleaning it up. We also have been able now, with their permission, to charge for theft of shopping carts. So that is big. We see those all over town, I'm sure you all have. And thought, wow, that's a lot of money that's walking out away from that business. So the COPP Citizens on Correct Patrol are now picking up empty and abandoned carts. They're not taking carts away from people that have their life's goods, basically, in that shopping cart. That's not the, that's not the idea. It's more for, if you're taking it away and we know you're not supposed to, that's kind of the emphasis, as I understand it. Chief told us that, and I believe I have this right, in nine days of emphasis, they have, they had 120 proactive cases. That's significantly over their regular caseload. 71 arrests for, including drugs theft, possession of stolen property, et cetera. So it's obviously making an impact and it is helping to clean up that area, which is something that we've been concerned about, they've been concerned about, and our citizens have been concerned about. So we're really happy that it's working well for us. Next, we talked about the immigration enforcement, the Mount Vernon Police Department role. The chief and the mayor put together a YouTube video with help of TV10 here. And if you haven't seen it, please, please take a chance to view it. It talks about the city's position and their role on the things that council, or ex, last, council member Morales brought up some of it in his comments. We've had a lot of positive reviews, lots of phone calls about it. Unfortunately, there have been some negative comments about it and it's very distressing to think of threats being made and awful, awful language being used. But I guess that's just part of life at this point. And I'm glad that our police department and our chief are tough and can handle it, right? So thank you for that. He also posted a letter on social media in both English and Spanish and it talked really about what the, what the responsibilities are of the federal and the local law enforcement. They're very different. Local law enforcement is not trained in any kind of immigration work. They, if there's a crime, you know, a violent crime, of course, that is something that they're going to act on if they need to. It's, it's just, there's just very different roles and we have to be cognizant of that. And they're not shirking a duty. They're doing their job. And quite frankly, if they did something wrong, they could lose their job. So we have to appreciate what they're doing. Our local law enforcement, and I'm very proud of our police department, they do a really great job and I just want people to understand what their parameters are. Let's see, they had a Colson, the Colson Community Group met here at the police court campus and they had over 100 people that were really concerned about the immigration efforts of what's going on with our current administration. And they were able to answer a lot of questions and I think that was extremely helpful. Let's see. I'm just going through my notes, I apologize. I think that's probably, I think, oh, the other, the last thing on the chief's agenda was talking about rebuilding our traffic unit. It has been kind of brought down by a lot of retirements and leave, people leaving, that we've had to reshift people from like a specialty assignment into patrol, which of course we have, we do because we need to. And so the chief has a very strong idea that he would like to have three people back on our traffic enforcement unit by June. And we hope, we hope to see it because we're always telling them, that person ran a red light or, oh, they just, dude, just get so frustrated and we all do, but that's just part of being on the road. But he won't let me have a camera. I tried. I was gonna try to help, be helpful, but I'm not trained. So anyway, news to follow. Next up, we had a presentation by acting, or I'm just gonna call him Chief Harris. Talked about, I'm giving you, there you go. We talked about a couple different things. We talked about a new assistant chief has been selected, James Sanders. He's been with the Mount Vernon Fire Department for 18 years. I know James from serving on the Skagit Community Foundation together. I also know him as an employee of the city of Mount Vernon. For the last five years, he's been a battalion chief and he will be a really great asset to the chief when he moves into his official chief position and James will be there to help him. So we're very proud and excited for James. We've also hired two new firefighter EMTs, one of which is a local boy. So we're very excited about that. And then we also talked about Fire Station One. He gave us an update. They're finalizing some floor plans. We are doing our due diligence with some other site evaluations. I think the sites are Lincoln School, the old YMCA location and the Elf Christians and Seed property. We're just trying to be really hyper-focused on making sure it's going in, that, that where we picked for it to go is the right place for it. So we're doing some more site evaluations just to make sure we're on the right path. And then the last, the last item on our agenda was a discussion with our attorney, city attorney, Kevin Rogerson, about some council meeting general requirements and procedures. We talked about, you know, just kind of went over the basics and that will be something that the council will be discussing as we move forward. And we adjourned at 7:14.
Mary, that was a pretty darn good interpretation. Chicken scratch.
It's a lot of chicken scratch.
Thank you.
Yes.
Item five B is council member comments. Would council like to address the public? Council member comment? Oh, yeah, Andrew.
Oh, I'll be quick. I just wanted to thank both of our commenters tonight for public comment. And I'd like to request that we discuss both of those topics that were mentioned at the next appropriate committee.
Fantastic. We get that, Becky? We'll count that as a committee agenda request.
Until we decide that we have different ways of doing committee agenda requests.
Sure. Anyone else? Yeah, Melissa?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to Juan for your thoughtful words. I hear you. I chuckled because I was uncomfortable and I will commit to do better.
Yeah. Thanks.
I just would like to take a moment also just to say thank you to our citizen and ex-city council member, Juan Morales. What he brought up here, of course, it makes me think then when we are in this corner and being in silence, is accepting what is going on and what is accepted. And thank you for bringing it up, Juan. And of course, if something, if something is happening in the community and what is going on, I think we just need to be kindly and empathetic and compassionate with the community because what is happening is not easy. I live every single day a situation for fear, even myself. And I don't wanna think how it is for those vulnerable in the community. They are in the same position as one of us are here. I was part of the committee with the chief here and I saw how many people were there. And I saw and I heard also a question they have. And I had a brief meeting with the city attorney and we were talking about a little, how we can promote what the effects of the meeting happened that day here in the, in the chamber. And what he was explaining to me is we are in charge to spread the word in a positive way to our citizen and say what the duties and the role for the police department is here in the community. We need to, I have seen in the churches, they've been part of the, doing committees for the community also. And I was one of those last Saturday and I was able to repeat what we were talking, Kevin and I, about that meeting. And what it is, is let the community feel safe. Call the police department if anything happened to them. Just because what is going on right now, you don't have to be in silence and not to call the police. If you are, if you're a victim of domestic violence or for a robbery or for assault, it doesn't matter. You are safe to call the police department or call 911 if somebody in your house is sick and you have to go to the hospital. We at the police department don't have any control about ICE, but, but what is, what is regarding to the police department, the community is safe. And I think for us, all of us, is, is what we have to do. Let the people feel comfortable and supportive and we are there. But once again, just be kindly and compassionate and good citizen, working around those, all the families we have in the Mount Vernon. Thank you, Juan, for bringing up your voice. I really heard what you said and I felt it. From, from deep in my heart, thank you because it makes me think.
Anyone else? All right. We, Roxanne, okay. We will move on to mayor's report. For mayor's report tonight, just a quick invitation, again, to come and talk to me about city stuff. I'm trying to, to move these mayor's coffees around to different times, different days so that more residents are able to participate. This one will be on Saturday, so next Saturday, February 22nd. And we'll be getting together at the new and improved Fire Station Two. You see pictured there, that's at 1901 North LaVenture Road across from Skagit Valley College. Please come over, check out the new and expanded Fire Station Two and get all of your city-related questions answered. So that, again, next Saturday, the 22nd, 10 a.m. And side note, if your, if your business organization has a venue that can hold 20 to 50 people and you'd like to host a mayor's coffee in the future, and we've had some businesses take us up on this, it's been great, please call my office. We will get you set up with a date and time that, that works for you and us. And that is your mayor's report for January 22nd? No, it's not. It's February 12th, 2025. Yeah, I lost like three weeks there. All right, we're moving on to new business quickly. Under new business, item A is a project update for the wastewater treatment plant influent pump station. And it's always a good night when the city's wastewater division manager, Gary Duranzo, is with us. Hi, Gary.
Mayor, how are you?
I'm doing, I'm doing all right.
Good. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight I'm gonna be requesting the acceptance of a wastewater treatment plant influent project. Before, I'd like to kind of go over how that project went. Our influent pump station was built about 37 years ago with a capacity of 30, about 6 million gallons. And over the years, we've made some tweaks and adjustments to the influent pump station and we've concluded with installing, our operations and maintenance staff installed 285 horsepower and 200 horsepower pumps in that pump station. And by doing that, it increased our pumping capacity to about 24 million. And 24 million exceeded the safe operating velocity of that influent header. We decided to install a 30-inch header in the pump station and by doing that, it's gonna bring the velocity down into a safe operating range and we were hoping to get an extra couple million capacity out of that pump station. We've only had one rain event since the project's been completed and during that event, we pumped just under 30 million gallons through the pump station, so that was, that was really good. And I believe with a little more tweaking and some process adjustments, we should be able to get 30 million, maybe a little bit more than 30 million gallons out of the pump station that was initially designed for, for 6 million. So in a nutshell, I would say the project has exceeded our expectations and the overall cost came in lower than we were originally anticipating. So with that, staff recommends council accept the work completed by Strider Construction on the wastewater treatment plant influent pump station header replacement. The wastewater treatment plant influent pump station was constructed in 1988 and designed for a 6 million gallon capacity. During peak winter flows, these pumps are required to pump as much as 24 million gallons, which far exceeds the desired operational range. This results in excessive energy usage and accelerated wear on the piping. Upgrade to the influent pump station was essential in meeting the peak flow demands and eliminating the excessive wear to the existing pump station during these peak flows. Physical completion was completed on November 20th, 2024, in accordance with the plans and specifications. Project bid amount was for $2,674,304. Additional paving and other changes increased the cost by $165,517.73 for a final adjusted project amount of $2,839,821.73. This project is fully funded in the wastewater treatment plant's 2024 budget. Staff recommends council accept the work performed by Strider Construction for the wastewater treatment plant influent pump station header replacement project.
Thanks, questions for Gary? Council motion?
I'll move to approve the work performed by Strider Construction.
Second. Motion by Mary and a second by Gary, need discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Item B is the approval of an agreement with Kaufman Engineers and Parks and Enrichment Services Director Jennifer Berners here. Hi.
Good evening. So this evening we are to talk about how we can get the Baker View restroom up and operational again. So back in July of 2024, the Baker View restroom had a fire in the restroom due to some changes that happened with how we could go out to contract our work for Public Works projects that we were ready to go. We had gone out, gotten our three bids and found out that can't do those kinds of projects that way anymore. So we had to go back to square one and write an RFP and go out for a formal submittal for that particular project. So it did put us a little bit behind, but we have gone out, we've done the whole process. We have evaluated the three folks that put in bids. Kaufman Engineer was the one that came in and we had myself, Frank in Public Works and Tim over in building to actually rank all of them. And Kaufman came out in front. So I've been working with them to develop their scope of work. We do have that scope of work now defined and have sent that on to WCIA for them to approve because it is a project that will be covered by our insurance. So they needed to buy off on the final approval of the scope of work. So I received that, so we are here this evening to ask you guys to look at the contract. It is for 62,000. This is for the engineering piece, so this will develop the bid specs for us to then be able to go out for bid for the construction side of the work. So what we're asking is for council, staff is requesting approval for the mayor to enter into an agreement with Kaufman Engineers for the engineering, architectural and cost estimating of the renovation of the Baker View Park restroom.
Questions for Jennifer.
I just have one question. This is going to be finished before the, before the spring? If you start as soon as possible or?
We're working to get it done as soon as possible. I can't guarantee a date right now, but we're working to try and get this piece done in the next month and a half or so, so then we can get it out for contracting and, and the work to start. So we do have baseball season starting up, so we do have two restrooms, portable restrooms out there, we're gonna add two more. And we're also gonna bring back in the hand washing stations. We took those out for the winter because they would just freeze. And so we'll be bringing those back in in March and we'll have two hand washing stations out there for portable units and they will be serviced every other day. So keeping up on that while we, we'll work and push forward on the new construction.
If there is no more questions, then I would like to move and approve because I, I saw the contract and that is the most popular park we have for our community and spring is in the corner and I would like to see this is happening and we have a space for students coming in and how what they need in Baker View.
Is that a motion?
It's my motion.
Motion by Yedis?
I actually had a comment.
We'll get discussion. I'll get you, Mary then you. Is there a second to approve? Motion by Yedis and a second by Andrew, need discussion? Mary?
Yep, I just would, would like to request the, all the bids, that we could see the bids.
Oh, sure.
I, we get those a lot when we do the, the public work stuff, so it's always interesting to see where the differences are, you know, on, on what they do and, and who bided on it. That's my only request.
Certainly, yes, we can do that. This particular bid because it, it didn't have costs on it, so it just asked for them to give us all of their experience and then we rated that.
I see.
And then when we came up with that, then we go out and we ask them to develop a scope of work that then develops a cost. And that's where we were negotiating back and forth to get that to a number that felt good.
I see. Thank you for that.
But yes, I will remember to do that for the future. So thank you, Mary.
Melissa.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to mention that this was a fire caused by vandalism and I believe it happened on July 5th, so it wasn't fireworks. But unfortunately, because of this, it means that a number of our children are not going to have a clean bathroom. Well, one that is not a porta potty. Will we be switching out those porta potties often? I mean, I can imagine all the mothers with small children that are now going to take their children into the porta potties and they're filthy.
I said the same thing, every two days.
Thank you.
Serviced every two days.
Yeah, they will be serviced. They don't service over the weekend, so we're having them serviced on Friday and then again on Monday. And so, and then it'll be serviced also on Wednesday. So every other day, we, they will be serviced. We will be looking at them and if there is some reason that it needs to get changed out. So we have two ADA units and two standard units that will be there.
And for the record, I, I believe this was fireworks thrown in a garbage can just outside the bathroom that.
Oh, it ended up being fireworks.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Definitely unfortunate, but thank you for, for going the extra mile and making sure those restrooms are presentable.
Other discussion? Comments, questions?
And this is not a complete tear down?
Correct.
This is an engineering of the roof that caught on fire, if I remember right?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's not just the roof, there is some other interior damage that was done and that's where we need an engineer to be able to come in and tell us what exactly was damaged so we can then go out for bid for the contractor. If we don't have that information, what ends up happening is you can get a lot of change orders because you don't know exactly what's wrong with the building.
So the insurance company has not said what they think the total covering of damages or would be?
We, we pay 25,000, that is our deductible and the rest will be covered by our insurance.
But they haven't said how much they think the damage is?
They don't know because they're waiting for us, right?
Until they bid it out.
Yeah.
It's almost like they should just take the whole thing down, $65,000.
Well, that's just the engineering. It'll be probably close to.
I know, that's what I mean, it's crazy.
It'll be, it'll, it'll be much more than that for the repairs.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just amazing to me that 65,000 just for.
62.9.
62.9, okay. We made a motion, here we go.
We did make a motion and it was seconded. There's no more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, item 6C is the approval of an agreement amendment, Skagit County and Leitig Construction. And City Attorney Kevin Rogerson is filling in for Public Works Director Chris Phillips. Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, my office negotiated this amendment prior to the construction of the Library Commons Agreement. Our lowest responsive responsible bidder, Leitig Construction, who was our general contractor, sought a temporary construction easement to lay down materials and storage to begin and complete the construction. We located a spot on 108 West Broadway, which is, I think it was gravel, a gravel parking lot by the county. And we negotiated with the county a temporary construction easement to the beginning of this year. We need it longer. So that's all this does is it continues the interlocal, agrees to execute this temporary construction easement until April 1st, under the same terms and conditions as originally bargained for. Leitig will be a grantee along with the city to allow them to continue to use, to continue to use this until we get substantial completion.
Questions for Kevin on the amendment of the date?
I'd move to approve the, to extend the cooperative agreement with Leitig in Mount Vernon and Skagit County.
Second.
Motion by Gary and a second by Melissa? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they no. Passes. Thank you, Kevin. Item D is the approval of an agreement with Castle Systems. And filling in for Chris Phillips is IT Director Mary Thomas. Hi, Mary.
Hi, Mayor. Well, hi, Council. I'm here to fill, to present to you the Library Commons Virtual Security Monitoring Contract with Castle Systems. City staff recommends the city council authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Castle Security for virtual garage security monitoring beginning March 1st, 2025. The monthly cost for service is $4,456.70, including tax. The garage is required to be open 24 by 7 by 365 per federal grant funding source requirements. A business case analysis was conducted to determine the cost difference between, between staffed and virtual garage security monitoring. Staffed annual option was $271,750, including tax, while the virtual annual option is $53,480.40. City staff recommends the virtual security monitoring option. If one of security concern is observed, Castle Systems security technician will call Skagit 911 for any security issues. So city staff recommends, city council authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with Castle Security for virtual garage security monitoring beginning March 1st, 2025. The monthly cost for the service, $4,456.70, including tax.
Questions for Mary on the contract?
Any questions?
Yeah.
I just have a quick question, Mary. So obviously this is new to the city, the whole virtual monitoring. What if we get in two or three months down the road and we figure out it's not working like we thought it would work? Do we have any recourse? Are we locked in for a year?
I believe we can get out. Kevin, do you happen to know that off the top of your head?
This is a 36-month contract.
If they weren't holding up, holding up their end?
Have a look, think that we could. My office was not asked to review this contract.
Okay.
Page 55 of our.
It's a 36-month?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if they don't perform?
Yeah, and there's a, there's certain contract things in here that I, I reviewed before, but on page 51, it talks about the incident dispatches, events and patrols and the, the number of those that they're willing to do within a monthly period. So there's, there's, it's a pretty in-depth contract, but, but sorry to your question, I have no idea, but it's a 36-month contract with a termination penalty.
Okay. I'm just, my, my packet, item D, it says it's only got 15 pages, so I don't know, is there something else I'm missing?
Oh, I have the entire, when I download the packet, it's 90 pages.
Okay, okay.
In that packet, nine, okay.
Yeah, that way I.
That makes sense, yeah.
Thank you, thanks, Andrew, for that.
It looks like there's a termination fee.
Oh, there is, excellent, okay. All right, I'm comfortable. Thank you.
Comfortable enough for a motion?
Oh, would you like me to make that motion?
You don't have to.
I'm too busy reading.
I'll move that we accept this proposition from Castle.
Again, motion by Mary and a second by Andrew. Discussion? More questions?
I, I'm not going to grill you about this because this is not a thing, but I am interested about what some of the other options were. I see that the evaluation to have somebody on site do it through the city was $271,000, which is exceptional. But I'm, I am curious, whenever we can employ local folks to do local things, when we pay them wages, they give that back to the city for being employed. I'm assuming that this is not a local company and that this money is just out the door, so just interested in exploring other options in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah. They are not local to Mount Vernon, but they are local to Seattle. They are a local Washington company.
Oh, that's fantastic, thank you.
The, the online monitoring?
Yeah.
Okay.
The company itself, Castle, is local.
I can tell you that Chris searched far and wide for, for both options, but yeah, definitely hear what you're saying.
And he and I met with a number of different, to go through the security system that we already have, different things like that, the, the cameras that we already have at the Library Commons.
Yeah, I see that they deducted the installation fee. Well, well done.
Yeah, I already have all, all that they need.
I, I don't, Kevin, I'm sorry, this is not fair to you at all, since I know you didn't read it, but when I'm looking at this, it looks like we are on the hook, we would have to buy out the contract the remaining months.
It's an issue of first impressions, I haven't read it, but just reading it for the first time, it appears that you can terminate at your convenience. So there's termination for your convenience without cause and then termination for default. And if you choose to terminate at convenience, you're paying a termination fee equal to the months remaining on your contract, there's some, some formula. So certainly there is a, an out, but it incurs financial cost.
Okay.
Last question.
Yes.
Was this budgeted initially?
I don't believe this was budgeted. The requirement to have, the requirement to be open 24 hours was news post-budget. And so the need for security, now I, I believe we did have security in the budget, maybe during business hours. So if that's true and if it was onsite security, this is likely a savings over that, but I don't know that for sure. It's a Chris question.
Once, once again, should not bother you with it. I will bug Chris the next time he's around.
Do you happen to know the answer off the top of your head? See, sometimes. Sometimes. More questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mary. Item E is the approval of an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1983. And HR Director Erin Kader is here with this item.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm here regarding the IAF Battalion Chief Collective Bargaining Agreement. The previous agreement expired December 31st, 2024. We started negotiations with them last year and came to agreement this year. Some of the highlights are, it's a three-year term, which is great for us. We increased the life insurance benefit from $20,000 up to $50,000. We increased the employer-paid health premiums for spouse and dependents from 86% to 90%. And this is in line with our comparables. We adjusted how longevity premiums are calculated. And again, if you remember, they were previously calculated off the top step firefighter, not the battalion chief's wage. And so now, the longevity will be calculated off the battalion chief's wage. And the cost of implementation for this, for this four-person unit, is approximately $11,000.
Questions, Gary?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Andrew and a second by Yedis. More discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Should pass this. Thank you, Erin. Approval of an ordinance for 2025 budget amendments. Steve Sexton is filling in for Mr. Bolesky tonight. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm here to pinch hit for Doug Bolesky, who's out this evening. So the first thing we've got for you this evening is a recommended action to approve an ordinance to amend the 2025 city budget. There's two items that need to be added to that budget. The first one is the Transportation Benefit District Fund, Fund 117, requires an increase of expenditures in the amount of $22,320. The city was awarded a federal aid grant for the design of the Colson Trail Safety Lighting III Project. The total amount of the grant is $32,000. It includes a required match of funds in the amount of $4,320. Additionally, there's local funds required in the amount of $18,000. So together, those come up to the $22,320. And the total cost of that project is estimated to be $55,000. So the design of the project, excuse me. And item number two is the Equipment Maintenance and Reserve Fund, Fund 501, requires an increase in expenditures in amount of $32,000 for the replacement of the solid waste encampment mitigation vehicle. As you know, this vehicle is used daily for encampment rounds, city garbage services, and occasionally for the park ranger. And again, this is in the solid waste reserves and included in the Equipment Maintenance and Reserve Fund. Lastly, I have a dug closure, a lot of disclosure for you. As these increases in appropriations were not included in the 2025 adopted budget, the budget amendments are necessary to complete and properly record these transactions. All listed funds here have available funding for these expenditures, and the recommendation is to approve the Ordinance 3906 to amend the 2025 approved budget. Any questions?
Questions for Steve?
Easy questions? Especially.
No questions. I'll make a motion, Council, approve Ordinance 3906.
Yes. He got it.
Motion by Melissa, a second by Andrew. Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. And item G, approval of resolution Finance Department Change Fund. And Steve has this one, too.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 1068 to increase the change fund in the Finance Department. Council, recommended action is council approval of the resolution. The cashier's change fund that is administered by the Finance Department is presently established at $600 or $200 per drawer for three drawers. This amount is not sufficient to meet the day-to-day change needs for sewer and garbage payments, in part due to our bank not having a local branch in Mount Vernon any longer. Many customers will bring in $100 bills, and the cashiers may not have the correct amount of change in smaller currency to distribute. So the recommendation is requesting council approve the resolution to increase the change fund in the Finance Department from $600 to $1,200. An attached, you find Resolution number 1068.
Council questions about Resolution 1068?
Yeah. Why is this a council decision? And is there a way to easily make it at the discretion of the department?
Probably because our municipal code is poorly lacking in detail as to when the council delegates authority such as this, and you could easily do that with a change in your code to make it clear that Finance Director has that authority.
Don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but as an individual member of the council, I would be interested in such a thing. But I would also move to approve if there's no other discussion.
I'll second.
By Andrew and a second by Melissa. Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thanks, Steve. All right. Item H was struck from the agenda. Item I is the approval of an agreement with Transpo Group. And DS Director Stacy Krachtner is here. Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Development Services Department would request that the city council authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Transpo Group, and this would be to complete an active transportation and safety plan with contract services totaling $129,000. The city has received grant funding from the Washington State Department of Commerce to deliver studies and plans in support of the city's response to new requirements of House Bill 1181. This is the added climate goal to the Growth Management Act. It requires local comprehensive plans to have climate element with goals and policies addressing climate resiliency and greenhouse gas reduction emissions and reductions. So the work under Transpo's contract would assist the city in completing a review of the city's transportation element goals and policies from multimodal levels of focus, and it would propose plan updates intended to reduce BMTs, vehicle miles traveled, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The work under this contract, if approved, will be funded from the $500,000 grant funding received from the Department of Commerce. So again, if it's council's pleasure, we would recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to enter into contract with the Transpo Group. Thank you.
Questions for Stacy?
Move that we enter into a contract with the Transpo Group.
Motion by Mary and a second by Richard. Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. That is the end. Thank you, Stacy. The end of our new business. For item seven, I will ask our city attorney if there's a need to call the mayor and council members into executive session.
No.
And with that, we will adjourn the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, at 8:00 p.m.